Shaboni is ready whenever you are.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education meeting of October 20th, 2020. We have a call to order with the pledge of allegiance in a momentous silence. The momentous silence is needed for Frank Spunky-Coughlin, who established our first safety town name we think was our first SRO in our schools, for Bonnie Leutman, who is a secretary at our library center, and for William Bill Walt, who is a science and P E teacher at Bassett. We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I would pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God, with its law and liberty, justice in all.
Thank you. We have the roll call, please, Mrs. Scher.
Mr. Shea.
President.
Mrs. Kennedy.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Molnar.
Here.
And Mrs. Zidisky.
Yes.
I need a motion for adopting the agenda that was written, except, Mr. Kennedy, you would like to pull under new business?
Item number four. B four.
You want to pull calendars, correct?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Which is B. So we'll pull that.
To have further discussions on the time crimes leading up to the Starbake. I don't think we've finished those conversations over the time of Corona. We never quite.
Never quite got there.
Could have been and everything, right?
Okay. All right, so the idea of the motion to adopt the agenda without sending the under new business?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Enter the desk.
No.
And Molnar.
Yes. Um, we move on to a five step community recognition.
Thank you, Mrs. Molnar. Um, gonna start off tonight with a little presentation. Uh, Richard Lewis from the Ohio School Boards Association made the trek up here from Columbus, and we appreciate it to join us on our first in-person meeting in a long time. But I'm excited why you are here. I know you'll take a moment to explain, uh, what you're here to present and to honor one of our special people up here. So turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Uh, again, my name is Rick Lewis. I'm the executive director and CEO of the Ohio School Boards Association. I think all of you are aware, but for everybody who might be watching tonight, the Ohio School Boards Association is a private nonprofit association. They represent 100% of the school boards in the state of Ohio. We've been around since 1965, and the only reason we exist is to serve as a source of assistance, guidance, unity, and support to the public school boards in this state. Um, I appreciate so much you allowing me to be part of your program this evening. I know you have a busy agenda, and I promised to keep my comments brief, but I don't want the remedy to undermine the importance of the words this evening. Um, today, hard work, commitment to excellence, and that above and beyond effort too often goes unnoticed, unthanked, and unappreciated, and that should not be the case. That's why I'm here this evening. Public school board service is a very difficult thing. I know you all get it, but for those who think it's simply attending a meeting once a month or maybe passing out the diplomas at the end of the year, they truly underestimate what goes into it. It takes so much time, the hard work, the dedication sacrificed behind the scenes, the continual effort towards professional development, time away from your family, time away from your job, and just that dedication is so, so important. The rewards of board service frankly are few. Uh, when you, when you look at the big scheme, there has to be an easier way to make $125 a month, and you certainly don't do it for all the public accolades. But I know you do it because in the end, you want to make a difference. You want to make your schools a better place to learn, your community is a better place to live. And if we're able to accomplish those things, we certainly have made a difference in, in lives, and there is no more better reward than that. Uh, the Ohio School Boards Association exists, as we said, to help school board members do their jobs. And everything that we do, everything that we believe in, all the programs that we offer, all the services that we provide are directed by people just like you, school board members from around the state. The people who serve on our boards are the leaders of the leaders. You're the school board members who've been selected by their peers to help provide leadership to the state as a whole. And we've been very fortunate at OSBA that Oregon City has shared one of your own with us. This Carol Ann Molnar serves on our Board of Trustees and a number of other functions. And tonight, we're here to say thank you. Now, I know you're aware that Ms. Molnar has been a board member for what, 10 years now? And during that time, has served in a number of capacities, school board president, school board vice president, a delegate to the OSBA Business Meeting, legislative liaison, and a leadership from your school board to the state of Ohio for student achievement. But she's also served your region in, uh, many capacities. She served on your region's executive committee. Uh, she has served on the arrangements of hospitality committee, which reaches out and brings new school board members and serves as a mentor to them as well. And most recently, um, Mrs. Molnar now serves at the OSBA Board of Trustees. She's attended countless town halls, she's participated in professional development above and beyond over these last 10 years, all in effort to make your schools a better place to learn. So in, in, in our highly competitive world today, the responsibility of how, uh, communities respond to the educational challenge are placed on the shoulders of men and women who serve on our school boards. And they are placed specifically on those who lead. So tonight, we want to take a moment to say thank you to Carol Ann Molnar for serving on the, uh, the OSBA Board of Trustees and not just providing leadership to the students in Oregon City or to the Northwest Region, but to nearly 1.7 million students across the entire state of Ohio. And again, that type of love and beyond, that type of hard work, that type of dedication to excellence should not go unthanked and unrecognized, and that's why I'm here tonight, Carolyn, is to say thank you for all that you do. Now, imagine if you could, this is where I would normally be presenting with a really cool plaque. Sadly, I realized about, uh, 10 minutes before the meeting, it's still sitting on my kitchen table. Uh, you know, there's nothing to say, I've got, I have to own it. I definitely have to own it, but we'll, we'll get that up to you. But I know it's not about the physical rewards, but it was so important to OSBA that we got the chance to come up here and personally say thank you for everything you've done for us over this past year and make certain to, uh, to say that to all those who are in the audience and to your community as well. Now, I don't want to leave this evening without saying thank you to the rest of the board. From day one at OSBA, we recognize there's no such thing as a successful individual school board member. It's only working as a team that you're able to accomplish anything at all worthwhile. And we know that Carol Molnar would not have been able to, to serve on the OSBA board without your support, without your willingness to step up and help, uh, help her as she serves in that, in that new capacity. So we also want to say thank you to the other four members of the board for your service, your dedication, your support to OSBA, and your support to Mrs. Carol Ann Molnar, as she serves as a leader for 3,500 school board members across the state of Ohio, and again, nearly 1.7 million students. So on behalf of the Ohio School Boards Association, please accept my gratitude as well on behalf of the, uh, OSBA, our trustees, our membership and staff. Thank you all for everything that you do. So, Mr. Gregory, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. We truly appreciate the, uh, the inclusion in your meeting. I'm mortified that I don't have a physical plaque to present tonight, but, uh, I promise to get those to you as soon as possible.
That's okay. Here's for Mrs. Molnar. Congratulations.
Thank you three months of taking issue with and honoring the privilege she serves with OSBA and helps with whatever she does.
We appreciate you very, very much.
Now, I don't know how we can do this, but can we figure out a way to get a quick picture before you sneak out? Or maybe it's just you coming around, maybe behind you, Mrs. Molnar, if you're comfortable, and we just get one from up front, then, um, at least we have something that we can share in our, our videos.
With our masks.
With our masks, yes, so come on around and.
Nobody will notice us.
Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for.
Thank you, and have a safe drive back. Thank you for making the.
Everybody stay safe, stay well.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want me to continue now?
Yes.
Some of the other recognitions here? Um. So we do have just a couple I just want to share with the audience, uh, some recognitions and some awards some of our staff have made. They're not here tonight, but really did try to kind of limit the number of people that, that might come out, uh, just because of COVID and stuff, but that doesn't mean we don't want to honor folks. We do have four of our staff members who have retired in the last several months. Uh, Jennifer Finson was a counselor at, uh, Coy Elementary for a number of years, and so we wish her the best and thank her for all her service, all those years working with our kids. Uh, Douglas Hayley, uh, of the bus garage. Flo Ross, who, uh, was a paraprofessional for a number of years, and, uh, if anybody knew Flo, you, she's a big personality, we'll miss her quite a bit. And Janet Free, who is a long, a lot of years, who is a bus driver in our district, and, and we want to wish her well, as, as, or wish her, uh, well also. Um, so we have three other, um, or four other just kind of awards we want to bring to the board's attention and just publicly congratulate them. We want to, um, recognize Lorraine Minkie for receiving the Northwest Ohio OSBA Excellence in Community Service Award. Um, last week, I believe it was, the Northwest Region held their virtual conference. So it was an online, uh, kind of, you know, uh, thing that we're used to, but, uh, Mrs. Molnar did a very nice short video, uh, presenting her, her award. So, so, uh, that was very, very nice. Congratulations to Lorraine for all her volunteer service in our schools, primarily Jerusalem. We want to recognize Robin Snead, our fourth grade gifted and talented teacher at Jerusalem for receiving the Lucas County Soil and Water Conservation Educator of the Year Award. So congratulations to Robin. We would like to recognize Tricia Soltons, who's here tonight for receiving the Ohio School Counselors Association Administrator Appreciation Award. So congratulations, and I know we got a, a kind of an upcoming ceremony here uh, soon to actually have that award presented. And we would also finally like to recognize Elizabeth Turner, teacher here at Clay High, Clay High School for receiving the Sun Federal Credit Union Extraordinary Teacher of the Year Award, which is awarded to a Clay teacher, or to a, uh, Oregon teacher each year. So congratulations to all those folks, well deserved, and, uh, we have a very special staff. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Um, probably participation, do you have any cards? I have none.
I have no card. Okay, we'll stick that. Moving on to Tricia's report. Uh, thank you, Molnar. Um, real quick, before I get to the report, I sent out to you guys, um, I just want to make sure you understand, um, why we need approving motion item C. It's the Charles Harrison Institute. It's agreed upon, uh, procedures so we can get the Medicaid money. They, uh, it's from, we're looking at the 18, 19 now, and then, uh, for the next three years. So that's what that is, that enables us to get the refund if we inspect or do some. Um, and then another quick note, it's the fine, my board update. It's the updated permanent appropriation measure. Uh, I believe I put little stars next to the two areas that are changing. Set over here, it's 4A, that's 44, 920, that was on in the last one. And then 499, um, there's two things in there. One was the psych, or getting help with the psych, um, constant interns working in Florida. And we're getting help with his wages, which is a great help for the district. And then we also did receive the bus purchase money. Uh, it had been put on hold, and they opened it up again, and so we did get that grant. So that's coming, so that's the other addition. That's the only change at this point. Um, I just wanted to make aware of what was changing on it. Um, the state auditors have begun the cash audit. Um, it's going to be electronic this year, so everything will be sent back and forth. I'm not sure how often they'll be in the district, but we'll see how that goes. That conversion papers will be done this week. Um, some things I wanted to discuss, we didn't hold a finance committee meeting this month. Um, we will next month because we'll have the five-year forecast to update. Uh, but there's some things I want to make sure we keep in front of the board so we don't lose track. The first thing, I hope that principals, I, I don't know how else to get this out to our, to our employees, but lunches are free for the entire school year now. So people are still putting money, some people set up automatic payments in the payment system, and, uh, we'll, we'll work with all the secretaries and all the buildings, anything we want. If, um, some of those people need refunds, or if they want the money put towards fees, if we start collecting fees again. I just want to make sure it's out there, no one, students will not be charged for lunches this year. They've extended it to the entire year, okay? So, um, parents need to know so they aren't putting those lunches in this fund. Um, school fees, at some point, we need to talk in the board, are we going to collect them? How are we going to handle this, because we kind of put a hole on them? And, um, so we'll need to talk about that. Uh, the one thing I also need to talk about, fall, fall participation fees for sports. We ended up having sort of a season, but I think it'd be fair at a minimum to see what percentage of the normal season they actually play, and maybe adjust accordingly, or we need to talk how we're going to handle that. The one thing I would ask that maybe we maintain, and this, of course, is a board decision, the career tech fees are a little different because those are truly core supplies they take with them. So, um, if we maintain any fees, I would, you know, hope the career tech ones, but again, it's ultimately a board decision, and, but we don't want to not talk about it for too long here because it's, you know, now that we're back, it gets further and further behind. Um, just wanted you to be aware, we have a process where we have a local attorney that keeps an eye on valuations, um, when there are sales of properties or if there are people who are companies, this is all corporations, we don't touch homes anymore, um, for homeowners, but if they're challenging their values. And, um, we had several settlements this month, which really is better than normal. And I listed them here, we had some corporate settlements. The really nice thing though is that many companies, and he had a list about them, that once they recognize that someone's actually looking over the challenges, they just drop them. Um, because it's, it's just the way we do business, I get it, you know? If you can save money, you try to. This is important though because it keeps the, um, it, it helps the homeowners. If, if someone gets a break at one end, someone else pays for it. So this helps protect the taxpayers from their values getting jumped up just because other people know how to work the system. So just wanted you to be aware of it. We're, um, doing our show, it's a little, it just started. Um, it's a new system, so there's always some hiccups. Uh, I think, I, I've been really happy Savage and Associates have really helped in terms of they're reaching out to, um, they've allowed, um, they have some, um, I'm sorry, they've set up Zoom meetings with people individually to help them through it, and, um, it's just the first couple of days of it, so, uh, we're still early, but that's happening right now. Unless there are questions, that's my whole report. Um, you know, unless you have questions on the finances that were set out previously.
Do you, I mean, the settlement, so, top of that funding, what are those? What are those funding?
Three funds.
Those in the what?
The one is the general fund, of course. This OO2 is our bond fund, and OO3 is the PI fund. Those are all the three funds that when we collect taxes, a percentage goes to each one. So it's, like, I believe it's 86% goes in the general fund, and then it's like 13 and 4, something like that, I would have exactly wrong, but it's something like that.
Okay, and then for the insurance enrollment, is that active or passive? You know, are they always active, or they have to enroll every year, or is it?
They're, okay, in order to get the, um, the section 125, $100 that we negotiated, they need to go in and check their balances and check their, um, check their addresses, you know, make sure their, um, dependents are correct. That's how they get the, um, $100. We actually now have a system, and when someone comes in and they're our employee, we give them the ability to go online and sign up for an insurance, so.
Well, if they do nothing, are they automatically enrolled, or is it active?
Uh, they do nothing, we keep them enrolled, but they won't get the $100. We kind of dangle that in front of them, so otherwise it's hard for people to do it. The unions are going to help this year. Um, Carrie said she would help, but we usually had, I'd say 98% of our people do it every year, but.
Okay, thank you.
On the, uh, lunch trees, paid by fees, career tech fees, et cetera, as a board, I think we should get this on the agenda sooner than later to discuss whether it's via Zoom or in person. I just, we decided to keep some of these fees, we don't want to pile them up on the parents all at once.
Apparently.
So that's something we would.
I think, I think we need to start a discussion of all the committees. I mean, finance committee.
Finance.
And then to me, that maybe might be the first, because, um, I mean, I have some ideas in my head that are scrolling around, a dress he knows, and, and we, we've always kind of talked that we would wait to see how the first quarter played out, and so now is probably the right time. So if we just hold together a finance committee, I think that would be a good place to start. Um, we could certainly get input from the board, maybe prior to that meeting or, or just after that meeting individually, you know, and get thoughts, for sure. Just a thought in mind. We could do it as a whole board if we wanted to, I just think the finance committee seems to make the most sense.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I just, like I said, I think it should be sooner than later, because.
That's why I put it on it, because I don't want it to drag out. You know, they have people on stage.
Yeah, correct, with school fees, and then you have a kid that plays winter and ball sports, and I don't have three fees staring you in the face come the end of the year, so.
And there is some.
Sorry, Chris, this time, but.
Yeah, that's, that's no good.
Um, so I'm fine with it, if you have finance committee, yeah, and then get our input from the other board members prior to making the decision.
Okay, could be your mom, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? May I have a motion to accept the treasuries report, please?
So move, like.
Um, further discussion? Voca.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mrs. Zidisky.
Yeah.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. Do we have any from executive session, anybody in the executive session? Okay, uh, consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from regular meeting consent agenda?
Uh, yes, I would like to pull B four to vote on separately.
Okay. Any other? All right, Daniel, a motion to accept the consent agenda minus what Mr. Kennedy asks?
So.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
I got a quick question. Uh, B two, uh, the flexible custodian. What is that? A lot of the other stuff we've been talking about, um, hours, they talk to you so many hours, this is just flexible, what does that, what does that mean? You just kind of use it as needed, or?
Now, a flexible custodian is what all of our custodians, it gives us the flexibility to place them at the buildings that they're needing, but they are full-time, 10-month, um, employees. They are the ones who are going to be disinfecting multiple buildings. Well, two of the three are, and the other one is the event custodian that was, uh, reduced last spring.
Is that why that different anomaly made them, or that?
No, no, they're, they're different rate because one of the individuals has multiple, multiple years' experience and is placed on the, on step two. The other ones are in step zero.
All right, thank you.
B, this is in response to the pandemic, just for extra sanitizing and cleanliness in the buildings, et cetera.
Um, what's your sandwich, so that's correct, since you can't see, shake his head. Okay, so is there anything further? That's the discussion, we need a roll call.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Zidisky.
Yeah.
Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. So now we need to, um, vote on item four, numbers A, number six, which is Mr. Kennedy being a volunteer basketball coach. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Voca.
All right. Mrs. Zidisky.
Yeah.
Uh, Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes.
And are you staying?
I'm staying. Okay. Moving on to new business, the policies. These policies have been reviewed and revised and are being presented for their first reading. A motion recommending the adoption will be made in November. We're moving past the school calendars down to donations, item C. We need a motion to accept the following donations. Ralphie's food, approximately $1,000 for the coaches and players during the 2020 football season, and for, um, Miss Betty Metz, who made a donation of masks to the elementary schools in the district hosting music team. May I have that motion, please?
Don't move.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Ralphie's.
And.
What is always so good.
Motion. Second.
Don't move.
Discussion? Voca.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Zidisky.
Yeah.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. Moving on to item D, transportation contracts. We need a motion to enter into transportation contracts with the following for the 2021 school year. John and Trina Floyd for, to transport their daughter to see her split academy. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion?
Quick question on the different three in D and E.
Oh, um, if you don't mind, I can talk about this one. The, the transportation contracts are set up for the state. We pay for, because we don't transport to that front for school. The item below is going to be, uh, this is happening every single day, and, um, we have to pay for it because it's a, I believe it's an IDP, is that fair to say?
Yeah, it's, it's a specialty that, um, we need specialized transportation for, so a family member is going to take over that rather than a bus. So we're coming, entering into an agreement with that family member. We, we've done this on occasion, I think, maybe two or three or four situations where we really don't have any other alternative, and it really only works with family member. I'm assuming.
Where's the 75 per day come from?
Um, I'm sure, uh, Mrs. Kosek negotiated with the family for what they would do awards.
Aren't they going to Columbus?
Is that?
I can talk to Columbus.
Out of this, out of this case.
Oh, we don't have to clear.
It's less than we would pay for the TLC van that we use otherwise. So it is a, it is a rate that's lower, and it is a family member, and it's much safer for everyone involved. But it, but the student is, is a student period at high school.
And so they let it all gotten into being transported, correct?
Yes.
I believe he's done it ever since he's in high school.
Definitely done it the last two years.
Yes. Okay, so we are, um, let's see, we did motion, second, discussion. We need a roll call for item D with the Floyd family.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Zidisky.
Yeah.
Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. On to item E, which is student transportation agreement. We need a. We need a motion to approve an agreement with Charles Virgin to transport his brother to in Franklin High School effective September fifteenth, twenty twenty for the remainder of the twenty twenty one school year. At the rate of seventy five dollars per day for the child, for the days the child is in attendance.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Voca.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Zidisky.
Yeah.
Mrs. Miller, yes.
Yes. Item F, we need a request for advance of taxes. At this time, the board needs to take action to request that the auditor advance us the taxes that have been collected to date. A copy of this request has been distributed to the board. May I have a motion, please?
So move, flagging.
Discussion? Voca.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Zidisky.
Yeah.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Miller, yes, and Mrs. Moore.
Yes. Moving to item G, the Oregon Economic Development Foundation. We need a motion to renew the membership to the Oregon Economic Development Foundation for the twenty twenty one. Clear, and the fee is two hundred and fifty dollars, may I have a motion, please? So move.
Second.
Discussion? Voca.
Mrs. Moore, yes, Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Zidisky.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Moore.
Yes. Item H, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed on the September fifteenth agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. In the government business, we're moving superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Moore. Um, I'd be, I'd be certainly willing to entertain questions, you know, about what's going on, uh, because most of our reports are fully related to that's where a lot of what's going on, so just kind of quick highlight. I obviously want to thank all of you and our community for supporting our restart plan that, you know, we, we, uh, put in place few, few weeks ago and, and that is rolling and, uh, you know, I feel very good about where we're at. At least within a school system at this point, I know there's a lot of swirling concern with COVID, uh, in the state and certainly in the county and throughout, uh, America, and that is, but, but right here in our own little world, we do everything we can to, uh, continue to keep our kids in school and, and I think we've got some advantages, uh, happening here in Oregon that maybe some other places don't have, and I'll talk about those in a little bit. Um, so again, I wanted to thank all of you, uh, we started seven through twelve this week, uh, in, in our hybrid, so just in a, in a quick visual and a few conversations, like Mr. Jerzky, I spoke with, uh, right before I came up here and I asked him, hey, another good day, because yesterday went well from his point of view. And again, went well means, you know, you're looking at all the pieces of the, of the day from getting here to lunch to, to leaving. And so he said he had another good day with the second group of kids, uh, today. So they'll be off, uh, tomorrow and then back to the two days in, in school, and that'll be this next two weeks, uh, looking forward to November second, uh, bringing all kids back. In the elementaries, we, we started, uh, with all our students back and, uh, it certainly was great to see these little kids in their little masks and, and kids get around, but a- again, I just want to reiterate the idea that according to the principals, I mean, there were some bumps. You know, a few procedural things we continue to have to work out with, especially the, the, uh, coming to school and leaving school, because we have so many more parents that are dropping off and picking up than we've ever had, uh, at all three elementaries. So Mrs. Soltes can certainly tell you all the, what she's learned in the last two days, but all in all, I was out at, uh, start today for pickup and, and it went real, real well. Um, so there's some things we're gonna have to adjust over time, just based right now, parents are outside of the buildings, kind of waiting and, and, you know, when the weather gets really rough, we're gonna have to figure out ways to, to accommodate that. And try to keep people from crossing paths and mingling and all that, and, and, you know, it's just not that easy. So, uh, it takes practice and takes time and a lot of, you know, evaluation and, and, uh, we'll, we'll eventually get there. But with that being said, what's happened in our schools, you know, each and every day in our classrooms seems to be going well, it's like, you know, riding a bicycle, you just kind of jump back into it and, and, and get going. So, uh, I, I did put out, you know, to our community, and, and it's been received very well, I think, uh, kind of why we would look at changing our plans and, and, you know, obviously the board has seen, seen those, but, but really anything can fit under these, one, and, and most important is our staffing levels. If, if we can't maintain our staffing levels, whether that's, you know, our, our teaching staff or our support staff or our bus drivers and, and, you know, those are things that uh, really could significantly impact us, uh, we are already short subs in multiple buildings every day. So it is already affecting us, some quarantine reasons, others just, uh, typical, uh, absences for, for folks. So, uh, we, we will continue to monitor that. You know, we are gonna do everything in our power to avoid outbreaks in our schools of COVID for sure. Uh, if we do though, I just wanna, I guess, reassure people that we're gonna deal with it and we're gonna isolate it and we're going to, uh, get through it. And it doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna shut down the entire school or shut down the entire district. It may mean we, we have to look at a hiatus for a couple of weeks, potentially if it's pretty significant in a school. Again, working with the health department, uh, they have become very, um, willing to listen to schools' needs, if that makes sense. Um, they're already looking at adjusting how, uh, strict they are in quarantining uh, other kids, if a kid is sick, for example, up until today. Up until today, if a kid was sick, we had to quarantine or send home all the individuals around him. We no longer have to do that unless a student is positive. Now, that is significant change. And that's gonna keep kids in school, and I'm telling you, every week we're having conversations with Eric and about keeping kids in school. Uh, it, that's our mission, our goal is to keep kids in school, we know we have these, uh, barriers in front of us, but, but we need to, uh, work through those. So I'm, I'm very excited about possibility of, you know, using some common sense and, and dealing with things in a way that, that can keep kids in school. Any questions on any of that? Again, there's a lot more going on every, at every level, but our staff stepped up beyond belief, they're doing wonderful at every level, so super, super proud of all of them. Um, I just listed some of the things that we're, we're going through. You know, you, you guys, you guys are aware of all the, the different, uh, safety measures we put in place and, you know, one of the ones we're struggling with a little bit are the acrylic barriers, we're running into a, a little mechanical failure on some of them. Um, these, these barriers are three pieces of acrylic that are together with, uh, connectors, those connectors are, are loose in some cases, and so these little kids are carrying these things and they're falling apart. So we're working with the manufacturer and I'm trying to figure that out, but we'll get through that and, uh, but, uh, you know, they're, they're working well, you know, we're doing all our, our cleaning, disinfecting, those types of things, we, we hired, you know, the board just hired some new custodians to help support that. Uh, we're bringing in temporary weekly substitutes to try to help cover as people are, are leaving the buildings potentially at any point in the day. You know, we have to have subs on call, so these are folks that are just there in the buildings on call, uh, when we need them. So, um, you know, but we've got a good plan, and that really leads me to the next one, which I'm very excited about, I put an email out that last week, and it all kind of stemmed from just conversations uh, with the health department and our partnership with Mercy. In your package, you have a press release that Mercy Health will be putting out, I believe, tonight, or at least shared with the media, so my intent is to put this out myself. Uh, it was, you know, after this meeting, hopefully, or tomorrow morning at the latest. Um, and, and, and really, it, it's, it's not a complicated partnership, but right now, we're the only one, you know, benefiting from this mobile testing, um, program that they have, and, and it all stemmed from us reaching out to them and it's been our partnership and then, uh, Sh- Sherry Sexton's relationship with Mercy and, 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 uh, it's come together and working with the health department, who is gonna provide a lot of kits, they have testing kits that they're gonna be providing, uh, I guess on our behalf to the mobile unit. I'm telling you, this, what we did yesterday was the only day we had, now I didn't get stats for today, yesterday we had twenty-three, um, students and staff. Yeah, less staff, just a couple of staff, more students that were ill, went home sick. Each and every one of them was given a call that day, and nineteen of those twenty-three's were tested the same afternoon. And the, and the other four were only, were not tested because the parents get refused or, um, weren't home, and we're still working through that, we shouldn't, because they call fifteen minutes ahead of time to get confirmation, so not sure what happened with some of them, but bottom line is, uh, we got results for some of those today, we'll probably get more of those results tomorrow, so it's a quick turnaround, and this is amazing. They test them, they give a little bag of candy and off they go. It was so nice, I didn't know that, so that's the feedback I got.
How, what, what's the, okay, once someone is tested?
Okay.
How long is it before they can be tested again? So say, for instance, they come back to school, or are they tested before they come back to school?
E, e- yeah, if, again, the only kids or staff that are being tested are those that have symptoms. Okay, there's a big separation between those that don't have symptoms and think they might have exposed symptoms. So if they have symptoms, they're tested, as, if they come back negative, they can come back as soon as they're symptom-free for twenty-four hours. Uh, but what that does for us isn't so much about the individual person, kid, but it allows us, again, prior to today, we were quarantining a whole bunch of folks that were around those kids. Now we don't have to do that for really two reasons, one, they changed their policy. And two, we're getting results back quicker, now if they're positive, then it immediately kicks in the whole, uh, contact tracing and, you know, then we're, we, we are going out, you know, checking kids and isolating those kids and going through that. Um, so far, that hasn't been, we haven't had to go down that road yet. Just a matter, did that answer your question?
But if they're, but if they're tested negative and they're ill a week later, will they be eligible to be tested again through insurance?
Well.
Or through their doctor, because I know I've heard of people that have been tested and then their doctor says, oh, we can't test you again because we just tested you a while ago.
I, I don't know that answer related to, but my conversations about the mobile health or the mobile team from Mercy is that they are testing it at no cost to the individual, in other words, whatever their insurance pays, uh, is what they will accept. If, my guess is if, 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 let's say, we, we actually have a case that it was about two weeks later and, and another person, it's an adult, but got sick again. Uh, they're getting tested again, uh, it's not through this unit, so it's through their own situation. So I'm imagining they would go out and do that on our behalf. Yeah, if they were negative.
Um, hey, how, our, that happens also to the COVID testing. That's part of our, so just so you're aware, I get a report on how much this is on behalf of our employees.
Yeah.
It doesn't help the kids, the employees.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've had a couple of employees who get, like I said, yesterday, part of that, that COVID experience, that mobile team experience, so anyways, uh, we're gonna get some, you know, public relations out of there, I guess, if you will, because it's, it's legitimately, their goal is to help the community. I mean, it's, it's not a profit-making, it's not a money-making thing. Uh, it's probably a money-losing thing, from what I'm being told. Uh, but their mission at Mercy Health is, is to help the community and, and, uh, with the goal of us keeping our kids in school, period. That's, and, and obviously people safe, but keeping our kids in school, they understand that the ramifications of not having kids at school, I mean, more and more data is coming out as to the mental health and to the, and to the, just the overall wellness. People are doing a lot less wellness types of things, so anyways. Um, so again, thank you to, to all those masts around, he, he was the one that kind of led the charge and, and Eric Zee over at Health Department and Nurse Sherry. Uh, and just a shout out for Nurse Sherry, she's working twenty-four hours a day, just so you know, I don't know when she sleeps. But I, I am not kidding you, I'm getting calls at six in the morning and ten at night. Uh, weekends, weekdays, it doesn't matter, all legitimate, so we know what's going on and, and to help our community. Uh, there is one thing on, on my list I just want to put in front of you, I do think we need to have some conversation, I was gonna recommend maybe we have this in, 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 uh, finance committee as well. Is just look at our substitute, uh, teacher pay, daily rate. Um, it, it is a struggle. Uh, many of our substitutes, um, who would normally be coming are not comfortable coming in in the COVID era. And, and so it's, it's, we're just not feeling, and, uh, the, the staff's picking it up and, and they're supporting us right now and, and we're getting through it the first few days, so uh, if we could maybe add that to that agenda, have a conversation with, you know, we can get what currently is being paid, but we're thinking maybe even jumping it up on twenty-five bucks and maybe go to a hundred and twenty-five. Don't know if that's the right number or the wrong number. I just know it's, we're at a hundred now, just everybody knows, for a flat hundred dollars. Uh, and then finally tomorrow, we're excited, been waiting for this for a long time, but, uh, uh, we'll be announcing in two thousand and nineteen. Even though twenty twenty's almost over, the nineteen-twenty school year, but, uh, teacher of the year, sports staff of the year, and administrator of the year. So, so for last year, even though we're quarter ended the new year, um, we're gonna be announcing that tomorrow. So we'll be going around and making those presentations, taking pictures and putting it out, normally we do it in a much more, uh, organized and, and high-profile way, but, uh, we're excited, we let those individuals know and then we'll, we'll let you know tomorrow. Okay, any questions? All right, thank you, everyone, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. The, the signage in the building reminds me of that old movie, Up the Down Staircase, which nobody here will remember anymore, but I do.
Even that roundabouts now, here, glad.
I love that, I love that.
Yeah, it, it, the buildings are really low-harl for the kids, that I don't think they didn't hurt to go wrong with all the arrows and roundabouts and so forth. Okay, old business, anyone? Board committee reports plans?
No report.
Catholic improvement, counseling saving?
No report.
Policy, U of C Calisita for the November meeting, academic.
Um, just a few quick things. The, uh, first quarter ended on the fifteenth. Um, the grades are gonna be final on the twenty-third. Um, third graders, uh, the reading testing is gonna be on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, and that includes the digital academy. Um, on November the second, K through six is a work day, and November third, of course. Uh, K through six has conferences. Uh, grade seven through twelve will be a professional learning day. Most of the conferences will be virtual, but a teacher can request, uh, an in-person conference if necessary. So, other than that, uh, hopefully things are going well, sounds like Jennifer Preppel has been really busy, uh, lately, so uh, hopefully things are going smoothly. First couple of days of high school today sounded pretty good from a firsthand experience. And, um, glad to be back in session because it's gonna help a ton in-person teaching, so. That's it.
Thank you. Legislative?
No report.
Student achievement?
Um, I just wanted to mention about the, we're all team making it to the playoffs for the first time in school history, been doing well, so. And great accomplishment.
Yes, thank you. Board discussion? Any need for an executive session? Okay, announcement of special and regular month meeting to I get November seventeenth, is that correct, Mrs. H?
Uh, yes.
Okay, shouldn't we go into, um, Lord forbid that we go backwards, that, um, we would go virtual again, then, for meetings? If we go backwards and then you have to.
If we're shut down by the state or something?
Yes.
I think we would have to.
If, if students are virtual, I agree with you.
That's, I just wanted to make sure that it's a hundred percent clear with everyone.
So is that how we want to find it, if students are going virtual for whatever reason, then we come to that, that we are a board meeting to, to.
We would have a special meeting.
To talk about it, oh, yeah, hold on, before, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Which is one issue that's clear, but, uh, I have November seventeenth, six o'clock up here, unless something happens. Um, anything else for the good of the board?
Um, can we get something, because I think we had quite a few things that we need to talk about, once the calendar finalized that discussion. Um, we pay for the substitute teachers and the fees, you wanna start in finance, correct? So I don't know, Jeff and Mike, if you can get that on the calendar, that we can circle back for an all-board meeting to just finalize everything before the seventeenth?
Yes, we have to, we have a finance committee first, I think.
Yeah.
So we definitely know that that's on November, usually those are on the thirteenth, does that, does that work for people?
Would they?
November thirteenth.
Keith, I, you suggested maybe a special meet, board meeting, so have finance made soon.
So finance after meeting first, sooner to discuss those two finance aspects. And then we all get together to discuss those two finance and the calendar, finalize everything before the seventeenth meeting. Does that make sense?
I'm, I'm the main, I mean, so it's just a matter of, of finance, usually it's on a Friday, but I guess that's.
Friday is the, Friday is the thirteenth. Usually for thirteenth, but that may not. But doesn't really give us enough time for special?
It's a board, right?
No, I mean, we can, if we set a special board meeting, we can adjust and have a special finance committee meeting in between now and when we schedule special. And we can find a time to set the special and then we work after long morning, set up a finance date.
Okay, we did it.
So would you like to set a special board meeting then first?
Yeah.
So is, is there? So is is early, is next week or do you think it may be that first week in November?
I'm on next week.
Yeah, okay. So definitely not.
Alright.
Just throw out there. So the week of the second through the sixth? Even the fourth?
The fifth.
We start all bringing all high schoolers back at nine, then the third is the voting day, obviously, election day, or off, you know.
I could do the fourth, but we're looking at.
Fourth, you don't need to worry for me.
Alright, what time is October?
In person virtual, is it? It matters.
In person, I mean, world person.
Okay.
I think fourth, special.
Eleven fourths, eleven fourths with the PM first. And then we can just schedule a finance meeting.
Well, if we have it on the fourth, we have it on the thirtieth, that Friday report. Oh. Have those make it.
So Jeff, you'll set on the email coordinate then?
Yeah. We doing this at Claire, the admin, the special.
Uh, let's just do it. Let's just do everything here. So there's no confusion.
Yeah. Alright.
Okay, so now I got Wednesday the board for a special board meeting and November seventeenth for the regular.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Zidisky will take care of finance and let us know.
Yeah.
Correct? Okay, good. May I then have a motion to close the meeting? So move. Second? Second. Discussion? Voca.
Yes.
Yes. Sure. Yeah.
Yes, and thank you, everyone.
So today, uh, Mrs. Shafoni was doing it, but we, our part just came in yesterday that we needed to do it from a s- single camera.